Okay, thank you. Welcome to the Worcester School Committee meeting. We are going to stand for the Patriot Elegance and the National Anthem. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Here.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Here.
Member Kamara?
Here.
Member Mailman?
Here.
Member McCullough?
Here.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Here.
Mayor Petty?
Here. Okay. First motion is a consent decree. All those in favor? Opposed or ordered? Item for reconsideration to commit as a body and as individuals to the state school committee code of ethics contained in policy BCA. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
No.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara? Do we reconsider? Do we reconsider? Yes.
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
No.
Member O'Connell Novick?
No.
Mayor Petty?
No. Item feels recognition to recognize Jennifer and Michael Cormier, founders and coaches of the Forest Grove Middle School softball program and Nicholas Chacharoni, founder and coach of the Forest Grove Middle School baseball program. Mr. Chacharoni, if you want to come up? On the car music here too? Nick. Mr. Corm, it's good to see you in good setting here today. Good on yourself? Jeff, good to see you. Okay. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, so I want to thank Dr. Morris for the information that he provided. I kind of condensed and included. I want to join, I want everyone to join me in recognizing Jennifer and Michael Cormer. Did I say it right? Cormier, apologies. Founders and coaches of the Forest Grove Middle School softball program and Nicholas Chacharoni, founder and coach of the Forest Grove Did I do it okay, Nicholas? Okay, good. Coach, founder and coach of the Forest Grove Middle School baseball program. And so over the past two years, softball and baseball has been added to the after-school offerings for students. These opportunities would not have been possible without the time and tremendous effort of the parents and community members who have each assumed all the work involved in organizing and coaching the teams. And in the case of the baseball team, this volunteer effort included personal paying for transportation to get students to and from the games and for umpires to officiate. Jennifer Cormier, Michael Cormier, and Nicholas Chacharoni are recognized and celebrated for their leadership, generous sharing of their time, talent, and treasures, and commitment to Forest Grove middle school scholars, which allowed these youth to proudly represent their school on both the softball and baseball diamonds. So thank you for your belief in our scholars.
Hang on one second. So I know Member McCullough has a few words. Member McCullough has been pushing middle school sports. One of the big reasons why we have it. So, Member McCullough?
Thank you so much, and I can certainly not take credit for the work that the Cormiers and Mr. Chacharoni have done. Middle school sports is something that I have definitely been pushing for since I got on the committee, and I know that I have the support of all of my colleagues when it comes to that. And really could not do this type of expansion without the support of parents and community members. I know the Cormiers have children of that age range, but Mr. Chacharoni himself, student, his children are older and in college, and he is still committing time to the students in the Worcester Public Schools to help them get the exposure to additional sports at earlier ages, which we know we want to see continue to expand throughout all of our middle schools and work for additional funding as a committee in order to ensure that those continue to grow and are sustained, because we know how important the additional extracurricular activities are to the development of our students. But really can't thank all of you enough as parents and community members for really all of the time that you've dedicated to our students and helping us along the way, because obviously we need our community to be supporting us in the work that we do here as part of the committee, and it's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Just like to say too, I've known Nick Chacharoni for a number of years. I've met Michael and Jennifer for the last few years, and just want to say thank you, not for this Forest Grove, for everything you did for sports in the city of Worcester, especially in the district picket neighborhood, whether it be baseball, softball, taking care of the field, making sure everything is right for the tournaments. It's much appreciated on behalf of the city of Worcester. And your job is one of those, it's almost like the mayor job, you can be thankless sometimes when you're when you're head of the Little League. And, but you do a good job, so I just want to thank you. And so I just want to, first, we have a Worcester school committee certificate of recognition presented to Jennifer Cormier, founder and coach of the Forest Grove Middle School softball program for your dedication in establishing the softball program for the students of Forest Grove Middle School, signed by myself, the superintendent in the Worcester School Committee. Congratulations. Thank you. We all have the same with Michael Cormier. Certificate of recognition presented to Michael Cormier, founder and coach of the Forest Grove Middle School softball program for your dedication to establishing a softball program for students of Forest Grove Middle School, signed by myself, the superintendent in the Worcester School Committee. Thank you. And Nick, certificate of recognition presented Nicholas Chacharoni, founder and coach of the Forest Grove Middle School baseball program for your dedication to establishing a baseball program for the students of Forest Grove Middle School. Nick, thank you very much. Yeah, let's get a picture in the middle. Why don't you guys get in the middle, we'll gather around you. One more item of business. We have a motion to execute the contract of employment between the Worcester School Committee and Dr. Tammy Murray for the position of Director of Special Education Intervention Services for the period of September 25th, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Hang on one minute.
Oh, sorry.
Is Susan there or is Sue there? Is Sue right there? Yeah. So we have a motion to execute the contract of employment between the Worcester School Committee and Dr. Tammy Murray for the position of Director of Special Education Intervention Services for the period of September 25th, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, so we have public comment. Some people have two minutes, just need your
Mr. Chair? I believe motion to suspend the rules to reconsider the previous vote?
Oh.
So it can be re-executed?
Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
No. So this is, oh.
Motionless to suspend the rules.
Yeah, you're right, I'm wrong. I'm used to the city council side.
Can you like re-go over the sentences again?
So basically this is a motion to suspend the rules so we can take the next vote is to reconsider. So there's two votes.
Okay.
Go ahead, Member Clancy. I'm sorry.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
No.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novick?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Now the motion is to reconsider.
Member Clancy?
No.
Vice Chair Johnson?
No.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
No.
Member McCullough?
No.
Member O'Connell Novick?
No.
Mayor Petty?
No. Okay. Now we have public comment.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Petty, Superintendent Monares, and the school committee members. My name is Melissa Verdiere. I am the EAW president, and I'm a Worcester resident. I come before you tonight because we have in the past year settled some really historic contracts, and we are still in the midst of negotiation for our transportation team. So I would like to say that transportation employees, both our bus drivers and our monitors, are the first educators our students see every day and the last educators they see every day. And it's really important that we remember the historic contracts that we have settled when we're talking about transportation and the negotiations that they're going through. Their contract ended June 30th, so they are currently without a contract, and we would like for the school committee and the EAW to get together and settle this contract in a timely manner for fair contract wages. Thank you.
Thank you. Is your name and city of residence?
Good evening, Mayor Petty, Superintendent Monares, and school committee members. I am Ram Simetal, city of Worcester, and I'm the bus driver. I'm the first and the last educator to start and end the school days for kids. We have been negotiating for over 10 months now. It's hard to see the school committee take $600,000 from transportation for other budgets areas as we are in the middle of negotiation. We are not fully staffed and need more drivers and monitors. Other employers are increasing wages and benefits. We have lost staff to AA, NRT, other companies. We work early, late, and for some of us, midday. Our rounds can start at 6:00 a.m. and go to 10:00 a.m. We have to be able for midday runs and early release days. Delay starts in the winter, and then the normal afternoon ends times and after school. Rounds that means we are on the road 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Or late at times. We can't just pick up a second job for an hour or two between runs in the mid-days of the day.
Thank you.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Grace Hakes y soy chofera del distrito de Worcester. Nosotros somos la primera que recibimos a los niños en el principio del día y somos los últimos en despedirlos a su casa. Muchos de nosotros hemos estado de acuerdo en soportar profesionalmente el proyecto de ley y derecho del distrito escolar. Y el distrito escolar parece no estar de acuerdo en que nosotros recibimos una condición. Hoy ellos piensan que nosotros recibimos lo suficiente en transportación. El costo de esta vida de housing no somos, no podemos vivir con el costo que ha subido en esta ciudad de Worcester. Muchos de nosotros no hemos visto que hemos tenido que agregarnos a programas de ayuda porque no es suficiente lo que estamos ganando en transportación o en cualquier otro trabajo. Trabajamos altas horas temprano y salimos bastante tarde, muy tarde. Hacemos mid-days. Nuestra ruta empieza a las 6:00 de la mañana, sigues hasta las 10:00 de la mañana. Tenemos que estar accesible para hacer algunos mid-days, para hacer delays. En el invierno tenemos que también entrar en la tarde para también limpiar los autobuses cuando están llenos de nieve. O sea que hemos sido, estamos siempre presentes para hacer el trabajo que se nos pide, sea el trabajo que sea. Cuando no hay trabajadores que están ausentes, un exceso de empleados que no entran a trabajar, muchos de nosotros somos los que estamos disponibles para cubrir esa ruta para que cada estudiante llegue a su casa sanos y salvos. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
How are you?
Good, Grace.
Good?
Yep.
All right, my name's Nick worst, resident of Worcester. I'm a Union Railroad worker and a member of the Independent Socialist Group, and I'm a proud graduate of the Worcester Public Schools. When I went to school, I was lucky enough to be close enough to walk to elementary school and to high school. But for the two years when I went to middle school, I took the school bus every day to Forest Grove. Those are, these workers are essential workers who are entrusted with children, who were responsible for getting me and all of my fellow students and, you know, the current students now to school safely every day. The jobs they do give working parents a little bit less to worry about and a little bit more time to get ready for their own jobs, to pick their kids up, to get ready for the day. And they have a hazardous job. When I was in school, I saw my own share of fights and disruptions, even on the school buses. And I think it's interesting, the public, the WRTA bus drivers have been picketing outside of the union hub, union station hub for safe staffing levels and safe working conditions because there have been attacks there as well. And so I think these workers are just as important as every other educational worker and every other worker in the city, and that they deserve a living wage, they deserve safe staffing levels, good benefits, good future, and safe jobs. And so I want to speak in support as a former student and as a fellow union member and worker of all of the bus drivers and monitors in the Worcester Public Schools.
Well, thank you everyone for coming out. I appreciate it. We all set, Melissa? Okay. Oh, we have one more? Okay. Oh, no, above us, if you can speak, go ahead.
Something completely different, although I'm fully in support of these guys back here. My name is my name is Maya Desai. Noticed lots of friendly faces around the room here. I'm a 20-year resident of Worcester. One of my kids graduated from Burnco in 2022, and the other is a 10th grader. But today I'm here in my capacity as a volunteer supporting the Afghan refugee folks. Many, many, many children are in the Worcester Public Schools right now. And I would like to begin by saying that what Worcester Public Schools has done for these kids has nothing short of miraculous. It's truly amazing, particularly through the NCC, the New Citizen Center. It's just been a joy to work with them. And you all should know that for some of the girls in particular, never would have, never went to school before they got here. And the work that's happened for them over the past 18 months is just, you guys should be really proud. Even though I'm talking about the Afghans, I also would like to extrapolate their experiences to the other immigrant communities, cultural communities. And so relative to item 3-218, Molly helped me bring these items to the agenda. I'm interested to see world-focused school nutrition improve for school meals and snacks. Many of the children I'm supporting follow a halal diet, and right now they're really not eating much at school. And that's, that defeats the whole purpose of a free lunch program. I would request that as this program evolves, the cultural leaders and religious leaders are incorporated into this process so that kids can feel confident that they're getting the diet that they need. Relative to item 3-220, this is a little out of order. I was introduced to a young man this summer, a young adult, who fell through a bureaucratic loophole as he was moving from NCC Secondary School out. He was really hoping to go to North High School, and North High School bureaucratically couldn't take him. He ended up with a school home, but he was on the brink of getting lost in the system. He was on the brink of walking away from school and not coming back. And so that loophole needs to be solved so that we don't lose kids, and I can provide additional details. Item 3-219, about six months ago, I believe, Worcester Public School received a grant from the Commonwealth for just under half a million dollars to support Afghan refugee community, and I'm eager to know, to see how that's being spent. And I have a ton of ideas in case you don't. And yes, I support a union contract for these kids.
Just want to thank you for coming out too, because we work so hard as a city. We're the first city to take the Afghanees into the state of Massachusetts and the Haitians now. You're so right on the food and the cultural thing. We have an issue now with the Haitians and different immigrant groups coming here in the city of Worcester. That food sometimes goes to waste because we don't have the right culturally appropriate food. So thank you for reminding us. So thank you. And I just want to thank all the drivers and the monitors and the coming out. And I just want to thank you for the great job you did at the beginning of the school year. This is one of the best school year openings we ever had, and a lot of it's because of you. So I just want, I just want to say thank you. So that's, that's on behalf of all the parents, the students, and the school committee superintendent and Mr. Allen and his group. So thank you very much. It means a lot. And we'll get this done next Monday. See you there. Okay? Okay, we all set now? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Much appreciated.
Woo!
Okay, so we have, next up, we have the we have the report of the superintendent from here to anywhere together with the public schools priority goals for the school year '23, '24. Dr. Monares?
Okay. Through the chair. So good evening, school committee members, Mayor Petty, cabinet, our viewing public. Tonight I'll be here, I'm sharing my my proposed goals for this school year. So in August, I did bring to the committee some multi-year goals. I call them strategic objectives. And the feedback that I received from the committee at that time was to take a step back, make sure that we are actually implementing the work that began this last, last school year, allow for the strategic planning process to proceed, and then to work on really making sure that we have some measurable impacts for this school year. So tonight you're going to hear how I've combined all of that requests through what I like to consider bridge goals as we finalize the strategic plan. You're going to see in here that I did not discard those multi-year objectives, but I am, I am proposing that these goals that I'm presenting are the ones that I'm evaluated on for this school year. Before I go too deep into this, I want to talk a little bit about the, a culture of accountability. And, and the difference between accountability in the educational system and accountability in businesses or the business sector. So in the business sector, accountability is measured purely by profits, right? That's how you hold people accountable to the work. And those profits are attained in different ways. But in education, the accountability has to start with relationships. And the accountability is nurtured and sustained through relationships, and those relationships with staff, relationships with caregivers, families, community, and of course the students that we serve. And as those relationships strengthen and the cohesion in the, the system comes together better, so it's really about how the adults are working together, that leads to the students doing better, and that's the accountability we're looking for. And so what we know from past practice is in education, a hammer does not work when it comes to accountability. When we want to, if we want to hold people accountable, first and foremost, we must maintain relationships. I share that because I believe in accountability very much, and I want the school committee to hold me accountable. And I also recognize that in order for that to happen, we have to allow the relationships to continue to grow in the district. If we move too fast and the accountability starts to become a punitive measure, then the entire system starts to crumble because trust is broken. And, and at the end, then children don't, they don't thrive like we need to. So what I'm presenting tonight as we develop a culture of accountability through relationship building, that will then allow us to have greater impact over time. So long and short of it is, I need more time before we get too strong on impact measurements because I don't want
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, so you're correct on this and your criteria.
We need to mute language line.
Okay.
So you're over your limit as we speak, ma'am.
Oh, we, I am.
So we need to mute that?
And can, do I qualify for an increase or no?
Uh, you can go ahead and submit your request.
What you have is my income. What you have is my income.
Testing. There we go. Okay. Technical challenges. Is there a way to get that off the screen right there? Okay. There we go. Okay. So I don't remember where I ended. I think I'll just say that essentially, I can't go too fast. I definitely have to slow down. I've been sharing with the committee that last year, we moved very quickly. This year, as we work on building those relationships and really strengthening the trust in the district, then the accountability can grow. So with that, I want you to keep that in mind as I share my goals. I, oop, I went too fast. There we go. So let me just kind of orientate you to the presentation. There's, of course, four parts. So first, I'm going to outline the leadership standards as they are articulated through the Massachusetts Superintendent Model Evaluation. Then I'll go over the district goals, and I actually am providing two goals, although I'm, by DESI standards, only to provide one. I just, there's a second one that we just must have as a district. Then I'll go over the student goal and the personal goal. Now, each goal, I'm providing a context, so like data of some sort to then lead to what the actual goal is, the alignment with the rubric that is part of the model evaluation. Then two types of evidence. So if you'll recall last, my previous evaluation, all the evidence that I provided was product-based, right? I gave you a product. This is a combination of both impact and product. And so you'll see that in the presentation. And then, as I said before, I kept that multi-year objective because I do believe that it helps to paint a bigger picture. And it will change as we finalize, or it may change as we finalize the strategic plan, but at least gives some ideas. So let me start with the standards. Again, these standards come from the model rubric related to the Massachusetts Superintendent Evaluation. So standard one is around instructional leadership. I'll read it just because it is a little small for those who are watching. This is the one that says, "The education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling." This is based off of the committee's feedback to me with the previous evaluation. This is the one that the committee asked that I have a deeper dive into for this year. So there was evidence of it last year, but more impact as it relates to this one. So you'll see that in my goals. Standard two, management and operations. So this one promotes the learning and growth of all students and success of all staff by ensuring a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment using resources to implement appropriate curriculum, staffing, and scheduling. So last evaluation, I had quite a bit in here. I still have at least one indicator related to this, but it's how it supports standard one. Standard three, family and community engagement, promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff through effective partnerships with families, community organizations, and other stakeholders that support the mission of the school and district. So you'll see some evidence of that. And then finally, standard four, professional culture, promotes success for all students by nurturing and sustaining a school culture of reflective practice, high expectations, and continuous learning for staff. So those are the standards. And then remember that there are, in total, 21 indicators within all of those standards. I am, you are to evaluate me in each standard with at least one indicator of evidence for each one. Okay? So that's just a reminder. So now let me start with the first district goal. And so to orientate you to what I'm looking, or what you're looking at, this is our current workforce in Worcester Public Schools. And so on top, you'll see the different colors, the legend. So the workforce has, in, I guess that's like a red, the African-American workforce representation is in red. Any staff that works for us that's of Asian descent, and remember, this is, people self-identify themselves, is in kind of that lime green. Latino-Hispanic is in the magenta color. White is in the green. And then multirace, non-Hispanic, that's kind of a, I guess it's kind of a teal. It's down at the bottom. And then female and male, right? So female is white, male is blue. So when you look at this, what stands out as you make sense of the colors, right, is that the majority of our staff are the green, which is of white ethnicity, and the white are their females, which is not uncommon to have a very high number of females working in education. That's very common throughout the nation. What you'll note also, so that comes to 82% of our staff, of our workforce. And so that's everybody reflective in this, not just a classroom teacher, it's everybody that works in our district. And then the numbers below then represent the other groups. And so that is 18% who are identified as BIPOC, right? Are Black Indigenous People of Color, and again, people who self-identify. Why is this important? Because it paints a picture of who is educating, who's in front of our students on a regular basis, right? The next slide is then going to show, I see you guys are confused. What's wrong? Oh, yes, I had to change those. Yes, yes. Follow this one. Yes. Don't look at your back. I'm sorry. I should have said that to you. Only on these two slides, I changed some colors. This is the only two slides I did that to. Sorry. Yes, follow this one. So what you see here, this is our workforce, right? Now, I want to remind the committee that when I did my Listening and Learning Tour, one of the themes that came out loud and clear from everybody, from staff, from families, from students, is that we need a more, we need a workforce that more aligns with the student population. And the next slide is going to show that for you. So the next slide, this is our, these are our students, right? So the, again, the female is white and the male is blue. So we do have a bit more young ladies than we do have males in Worcester Public Schools. Not huge difference, but we do have that. And then color-wise, you can see that the magenta, again, are our Latino-Hispanic students, and those numbers have continued to increase. The light green, or that kind of lime green, those are our white students, and you can see that those numbers have decreased. For the most part, the red, African-American, has increased somewhat, not as rapidly as our Latino, but we have increases there. Our lime green, which is down towards the bottom, right? That's our Asian population. We've actually had a slight decrease. And then the one that tends to stay pretty the same, as you can see, is our multiracial one, right? And so lots of different children fit in there. This is, so if we pull the numbers, 27% of our student population are identified as white and 73% are BIPOC. So it's almost the exact inverse, right? When we think about our staff population, I think about our student population. And so when our students are saying they don't see people that look like them, that's probably pretty accurate, right? Now, we have great teachers in our district. We have great people working for us. Because again, this is, the workforce presentate, our numbers were not just teachers, it's everybody. But we need to do something about trying to have a closing of the differences between who is working with our students on a regular basis and then who our students are. Representation does matter. And so that's where this goal comes from. So by June 30th of this school year, so 2024, ensure a district-wide system for recruitment, hiring, and retention of a talented culturally and linguistically competent workforce through a culture of belonging and authentic engagement. And we measure this by a 10% narrowing of the gap between the overall staff and student demographics. The rubric alignment for that, you could see down in the corner. So this would be aligned specifically to the management and operations. 2BHR, didn't think that that was important as much as that there's a rubric alignment. And what would be the evidence? So the impact evidence, we will decrease staff, daily staff absenteeism. We believe that that is a good way of measuring sense of belonging and how people feel at work. We want to decrease staff grievances at the school level. Again, another way to measure how the retention is happening in our schools and that there is a positive culture. And then, of course, increase BIPOC staff. So I'm saying we would, the actual measurement is 10% narrowing of those two groups with some additional decreases and increases in different areas. The product evidence, so there's quite a bit of systems work that still needs to happen this school year, to develop a Worcester Public School Staff Cultivation Guidebook. This is really talking about the work that we need to really go deeper into around equity and unconscious biases and those type of things. So I want a guidebook that would guide schools and staff and district. I want a system, another product would be to have a system to track our retention rates. We have some of those numbers, but we want to get better at developing a system so that we can use that data to then improve why people are leaving and make sure that we're turning that in a different way. We want a system to track the language proficiency of our staff. We currently don't have a system in place there. And then we want to partner with institutions or outside community agencies to help develop our staff into a more linguistically diverse community. This one is really about, you know, there are people who, they're home, there's another language spoken, and therefore, as a result, they speak two languages, English and whatever the other language is. But we have people that would like to learn a second language, who work for us, and we want to, we want to help them with that. And so we want to look for some institution or a community partner to help us grow multilingualism throughout our district. I was really excited when my team came up with that one because it really shows a commitment to multilingualism for all. The multi-year goal that I see this feeding into, so this is what I shared back in August, was the goal of honoring building and sustaining high-quality leadership across the district that supports authentic engagement and monitors continuous learning of teaching, learning, and a sense of belonging. So that's the goal I see this connecting to. I'm going to go to the next goal now, which is another district goal. I feel like I've been talking about the context of the need for facilities for like six months now. So this, I didn't put a context on here. But we know, again, this came out in the Listening and Learning Tour, the importance of modernizing our facilities. Just had to close schools a couple of weeks ago because we don't have air conditioning. We have challenges that are really beyond the scope of Worcester Public Schools. And we're working collectively with the city management, met again today on this. And we're going to have a strategy that we can do collectively because this is not, you know, we don't need to point fingers. We need to just figure out how to make this happen, right? So the goal that I'd like for this year is to strengthen maintenance protocols and implement a school safety, and implement school safety recommendations to guarantee the continual modernization of all Worcester Public School facilities, cultivating an environment that is both secure and supportive of learning by building capacity and valuing knowledge. And I want you to measure me with that by 100% completion of the highest priority emergency projects that will be identified through the safety audit. So we recognize we haven't given you the safety audit yet. We do know that they are prioritized, and we're saying we're going to commit to the highest priorities, that particular one, to get that done at 100%. It aligns with two rubric items. One is management and operations, so this 2A environment. And the other one is family and community engagement, which is 3C on communication. Because as part of this particular goal, it is about also making sure that we're implementing our safety protocols and working with our families to know what to happen in the event of an emergency and what their role would be. So that's where the family and community engagement comes in. So the impact evidence. In addition to making sure 100% of our highest priority projects are completed, we also are prioritizing our high priority projects and that we will respond to them within 72 hours by either completing that project or providing an action plan of how we're going to do it. So what that looks like is many times at schools, you get a call or something is submitted through our system, someone goes out to fix it. Sometimes they can fix it, but sometimes they can't. They need a part. It's just bigger than what they thought. And so that's the action plan part, that our schools know what's going to happen next if it can't be fixed within that 72 hours. So that's the impact evidence. And then the product evidence. We need to create a system to collect and monitor the completed safety trainings and drills. Oops, sorry. Click. And we need to create a user-friendly status update system for work order submissions. So we're very committed to really making a difference and turning around what has really not been a priority or has been ignored in the past when it comes to our school facilities. Facilities are just as important as the academic achievement. Where children learn, where staff works, makes a difference. I'm really pleased with the work that I've already seen coming out of our facilities team. The commitment is there. They are just, not just hard workers, because we always have hard workers. They're just, their commitment to excellence is to be commended. And again, I do want to highlight that, continue to work with City Manager Batista to really come up with a results-driven commitment to turning this huge Titanic of facilities that's needed in Worcester. So that's the second district goal that I am proposing. And the multi-year objective, which I didn't bring last time, but I really thought about, what's a meaty multi-year objective that will make a difference for the children in this community, you know, three years from now? And I do believe that it's to develop and identify ongoing revenue streams for Worcester Public Schools' facilities master plan. So we're going to get a master plan done. That's not going to be enough. We're going to need to figure out how do we fund this regularly. And that's going to take all hands on deck and all brains working together. But I do, that's the legacy that really needs to be left for the future generations. So it's a big one, but the district, we're committed to making this come to be. Those are the two district goals. I'm going to go into now the student goal. And in order to talk about the student goal, I need to talk about the accountability system. And so DESI, which we know is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which guides a lot of the policy at the state level, has identified indicators for the accountability system. What you, this pie chart represents here are the non-high school, aka third grade through eighth grade indicators. And you can see how it's broken down. So 60% is achievement. That's measured through MCAS. So when you see achievement, in your mind, you should be thinking MCAS. 20% is growth on MCAS. So the achievement, and Dr. Morris, you shake your head if I'm right about this. I think I, I'm, yes, okay. The achievement is attaining proficient or excelling on it. The growth is wherever student was, did they grow to the next level? So both the achievement and student growth have to do with MCAS. One has to do with actually attaining proficiency or advanced. The other one has to show or advanced, the other one has to show movement. The 10% of the accountability system for our grades three through eight schools is English language proficiency, and that is how students do on our access, and then find access, which is the language acquisition test. And then finally, chronic absenteeism. So 10% of that is for chronic absenteeism. I want to make sure. So this is something I just want to, for the committee, to just remember about the students that we serve in Worcester, is we have a very large number of students who are language learners. We know that about our community. It's part of the beauty of the community. So when you have a significant language and literacy need, because language and literacy go hand in hand, we have to be very intentional about how we're monitoring how children are acquiring the second language, maybe for some of our children, it's the third language, but acquiring English and developing their literacy so that they can demonstrate what they know on the MCAS. So we cannot ignore how our children are progressing in English. That's the long and short of it. And as a district, we have not had that as much as a forward-thinking part of our work, but we must. It is necessary, not just for our language learners, it's necessary for any child because standard-based instruction requires that children learn new language, new vocabulary, new concepts, and developing that language is important. So these are the indicators and the percentages for our schools three through eight in the accountability system. High school looks a little bit different. You can see the achievement, you can see the student growth. So at the high school, again, achievement, student growth, both have to do with MCAS, but the high school, it's 40% of the achievement. Then you see high school completion, so that's graduating with your peer group on time, what we call cohorts. 10% of the English language proficiency, so again, 10% of the accountability system has to do with how children are acquiring English as measured by the access test. And then 10% have to, it's a combined chronic absenteeism and advanced coursework. So what does advanced coursework include? That includes participation in things like early college, AP courses, Project Lead the Way, dual enrollment, and some other areas that the state has identified as advanced course. So that all goes together in that 10%. Graduation rates, the high school completion, also includes minimizing our dropout rates. So high schools have a little bit different, but you can see how the third through eighth grade leads into the high school. Why is this important? Because for the student goal, this is what I'm proposing, that by June 30th, 2024, so the end of this school year, we will have collaboratively-led school teams in identifying and using multiple sources of evidence to assess, respond, and improve outcomes in all schools with an intentional focus on historically underserved youth by building capacity, valuing knowledge, authentically engaging, and creating a sense of belonging as measured by, and this is the accountability part, right, increasing the DESI accountability score for the schools that are at or below five by 4 percentile points, increasing the DESI accountability score for the schools that are between six and 10 by 5 percentile points, and increasing the DESI accountability score for the schools that are between 11 to 20 by 6 percentile points. This is where you will see heavy alignment to the instructional leadership of the rubric, because there are three indicators on here that I am saying this represents curriculum, assessment, and data form decision-making, and then also the family engagement with sharing responsibility. Because as we work through leading teams on how do you use multiple sources of data to assess and really respond, that includes, including the families in this work. The evidence of impact, in addition to moving our schools that are not performing as well as we know that they can, is to increase third grade reading performance, demonstrated by a comparison of how our students did last year at the end of the year using the STAR assessment and how they'll do at the end of this year. We have, through the committee's approval, invested heavily in a new language arts curriculum for our elementary schools, and we have started training, and we're going to keep training our teachers, and we do, we're putting a lot of eggs in this basket about making sure that our children are, our third graders are reading at grade level because we know that that's so incredibly crucial to them being successful as they move through upper elementary and into middle school and high school. In addition, additional impact evidence will be to increase the percentage of students who are in grades seven through 12, who self-report, because this is what they do, they self-report on how they are engaged in school as measured by the Worcester Public Schools Culture and Climate Survey, or otherwise known as Panorama. So these two impact evidence points are what we've already shared with our principals at the beginning of the school year. Teaching and Learning Team has already said we've got two priorities for this year, improve third grade reading and increase engagement at our secondary schools. And this is based off of what has happened since last year and even before I started. So the commitment is here, we know we're going to increase it. We believe in increasing these and working with the teams on how do you use multiple forms of data to make informed decisions for children that the, all the schools will increase, and specifically the schools where, that are lower in decile ranking by DESI's accountability system. Products for this, because the products really help us with the evidence, with the systems improvement, is we will have a Worcester Public Schools Data Literacy Guidebook. It's that guidebook that's going to help guide these teams and help us to continuously improve even into next year and future years. Additionally, we have noted, again, because this is where I go back to our language learners, that our multilingual education department and our staff and people at our parent information system could really benefit from an operating manual, making sure that we're placing children appropriately when they first come into our schools, using the Home Language Survey, and then monitoring their growth and getting and, and moving children into a reclassification status where they are no longer considered English learners. They might still stay in our dual immersion program because that's what the family chooses, but it's our responsibility to make sure our children are progressing with English and starting with an operating manual from our multilingual education program, which, once we get our audit, remember, we've got an audit that's being conducted right now in the multilingual program, this manual will help to determine what goes in there. And so then the final multi-year objective that, again, I showed in August, remains the same, that we're doing this work, really building the data literacy at all of our schools by, so that by June 30th, in three years from now, so June 30th, 2026, will ensure that all K-12 students have equitable opportunities to take ownership of their learning and engage in a variety of rigorous and relevant learning experiences to achieve their personalized goals. So we do believe that that's where we need to go. Our scholars are telling us that school doesn't mean a whole lot to them right now, and we need to find ways to keep them engaged. And, and it also aligns with the vision of a learner, and it aligns with the, the instructional framework and, and what we know we need to have children ready for their future. And so I, before I go to the next slide, I want to, I want you to think about this. I'm going to give you an analogy that I've used a little bit with Cabinet. So I'm saying that hold me accountable to moving a small number of schools, a certain number of schools, but know that the whole district will grow in terms of learning how to use multi, multiple sources of data. It's just the accountability part will be on specific schools. And I like to think about it in terms of having a plate. So the plate is like a dinner plate, right? We only have so much space on our dinner plate. Let's call that space time. We only have so much time to get something done. When you are trying to figure out on that dinner plate, how much am I going to have on this plate because I could only fit so much? So today, I'm going to choose to focus more on some green leafy vegetables and lean protein because that's what my need is today. That's the data that is telling us what, and so take that analogy now and shift it to the data-driven work, right? So there's only so much time that we have with our schools. So we're going to, when we work with our schools, everybody's going to have the same amount of initial time on how to use data, but then district staff will put additional time priorities, more servings, if you will, for the schools that we're saying need a bit more help. Okay? So everybody gets it all, it's just some get more than others. And because we, time is, is, is constant, we never have enough of that. So I don't want you to think that we're not going to work with all the schools. I just want you to measure the goal based off of the schools that we're going to move. Okay? Last but not least, is the professional goal. So as a second-year superintendent in Massachusetts, I am required to continue to participate in the new Superintendent Induction Program. Actually, had a virtual meeting yesterday, and so I will continue to participate in that for this year. And the, the products that are expected is to have what they call a strategic objective, not necessarily a strategic plan. Now, in Worcester, we need a strategic plan, so we will have the strategic plan that is above and beyond what is required for NISIP. And that strategic plan will include key performance indicators, AKA data points, with a timeline by which we will come back to the committee regularly to let you know how we're doing. So that is my recommendation for my professional goal. You'll see the alignment rubric, it lines with the, the fourth, the fourth standard on professional culture, commitment to high standards, and shared vision. With that, I want to thank you for listening and look forward to your feedback and questions.
Member McCollough, I'm a member Clancy.
Thank you.
I really appreciate that some of the feedback that was given previously when coming forward with these goals was taken to, into account when you came back to us with this today. So I really appreciate hearing about a lot of the plans for the goals for this year and where we're going as a district. I really think the culture of accountability through relationship building is so important, and I think it's something that we've talked about prior to you even getting here, was how important those types of steps in this district were going to be. And I certainly understand from your presentation that some of these items aren't necessarily a tangible measurement as much it is a feeling of belonging and a culture of belonging, but it all plays into what we need to do as far as the goals go and as far as where we need the district to be. Certainly, we know last year we moved at a very fast pace, and sometimes it was a, maybe a little too fast at times, but somewhere where we needed to get so we could have this year after a building year moving forward. You know, morale increase is already evident through work that has been going on, additional work with the contract for support throughout the district, and the continual statement from you and the leadership team that we have high expectations, but there will be support that comes along with those high expectations. And that's where we're going to get to these goals. As far as the presentation regarding our student makeup and our staff makeup, as far as where we are about diversity, I really appreciate that you're giving us a number of the 10% narrowing, narrowing of the gap overall, because obviously, we even hear it from our educators, that it's crucial for our staff to look more like our student population. Obviously, we want the highest quality educators and staff in our system, and I think that that can be achieved with increasing the diversity amongst the staff population. One of the things I will say is that there was a lot of work done previously with community groups to encourage that type of situation, but I think it just didn't go anywhere. So certainly, I know we have a lot of our universities in the city that have worked with us previously and done some of that work. I actually sat on one of the committees a few years ago where we worked with Worcester State, and there was a lot of work with DESI as well as members of the community and the district on that, and we kind of just didn't segue forward that because there was a lot of work about getting students not only to realize that education as a career was attainable, but also desirable, right? And so that's a big thing, I think, for our students because there are so many opportunities out there. So if we can get our students today interested in becoming educators or working in the schools, we'll definitely continue to see a shift where we go with that narrowing of the gap. I think, you know, we've already seen a lot of decrease with grievances, certainly at the school committee level. So to continue to work on that decrease of staff absenteeism grievances and increase in the BIPOC, certainly are things that will continue to serve us well. Facilities, I think we know how important that is, that we continue to try to fight for our new buildings, but also how do we continue to support and maintain the buildings that we do have? And I've already seen so many great things with this expansion of the facilities department. And I know personally, I've had interactions with some of them, and they're so responsive and so understanding and so passionate about where this district is going and understanding the importance of clean, maintained, serviced buildings and how we all work together to get there. So I'm looking forward to seeing how that all plays out as part of the goal as well. Student achievement for all learners as a priority, and how do we get there? The importance of reading at grade level, and then the seven through 12 self-report on engagement. I'm looking forward to seeing that data when we have all of that because I think we've really started to see a shift in the culture in the schools. There's a lot of positive feedback of some of the new roles as well, and that's how really increasing our student engagement and, you know, seeing some stuff between Burnco and Darty and just knowing that there's a lot of excitement from the staff and the students with really being more collaborative and working with the Q teams. And I think that's definitely an excellent goal for us to be able to see some actual results for at the end of the year. And then certainly the data utilization, I think one thing I've seen this past year out in the district was where schools were actually using their school-based data and using that in the curriculum in their schools and really targeting, like you talked about the plate, right? We know that we only have so much time and that we want all of our schools to be able to achieve success. We have to use that school-level data to drive what's going on in those buildings to get our overall data where we need it to be as well. So I think that I'm very happy with the goals, and I thank you for the presentation and looking forward to seeing the results.
Thank you. Member Clancy?
Thank you. And I feel like I'm going to echo everything Molly just said, so I might as well sit down. Just kidding. In the beginning, you taught, you started talking about how it starts with relationships. And superintendent in your team, I just have to say, it's so different in just the year, going into our schools and seeing the excitement, seeing the morale of the teachers and the staff in our schools, and it, you know that it's going to trickle down to our students, and then it's going to trickle down to our families, and it's going to trickle down to our community. But what you have done in just a year is just, between you and your team, has just been incredible. So I just wanted to start off by saying that. And I appreciate SMART goals, I'm just, I've never been a fan of them, and everyone knows that. But your goals are so clear, they're concise, they're measurable, and you have percentages that I truly believe are achievable. And as part of your evaluation last year, I really honed in on starting to see the impacts. How will this impact our students? How will this impact our staff? And I'm truly seeing it this year, which I'm excited about. It's year two, and you're really reaching for those goals that we're going to start seeing the impacts on learning. And you're covering things that we've asked for. We've asked for a staff that reflects our students. We've asked for, and I do want to say, I know you mentioned that your, your team had brought this up, but the idea that your staff really want to be supportive in learning another language and that you're going to find a way to get them involved in that and find a way for that to happen. I think that's fantastic because you're truly listening to what our staff wants, and to incorporate that in your goals, I think is awesome. Let me just see. Also, the facilities update, I mean, we've talked about how updated our buildings are. I love that we're getting the updates from administration and FNO, and I think that you, it's great that we're hearing about all the improvements going on and the turnaround time, 72 hours. I know that's, that's a reach, but I think it's, you know, it's great because I know that our schools are looking for that. How many times have I heard, you know, oh, I put a work order in, you know, a couple of weeks ago, and I haven't heard anything, I haven't heard from anyone. So I think that's a great goal to have. Obviously, the third grade reading, because, I mean, I read your article, and I thought that was, you know, it was great to add that to it, you know, just to know how important it is to have strong reading skills by third grade and, you know, it sets a tone for our students for the rest of their education career. I just do have one clarifying question. So on the student goal, where you talk about increasing the percentages in the different schools, my question is, would that be part of your evidence?
Through the chair. I want to make sure I'm understanding your question, like I'll submit something? Is that what you mean?
Well, no, because you're mentioning increasing the DESI accountability score for schools score for schools below, at or below five, by four points. So, I just, and I'm not, I just didn't know if that was going to be part of your evidence, because it seems like if you're looking to increase that, it could be part of your evidence for this year.
It is. As I'm saying that, I'm thinking about what's happening this year, and we're, like, right now, we don't even have final scores or rates. So, that, that's my only, um, pause, is, but I think we can find some way to show that, that the, so I'm looking at Dr. Morris, because like, right, DESI doesn't even have it finalized right now for last year's, so I won't be able to submit something by June thirtieth, I'm realizing as I'm saying this. Yes. So, we'll find something that we can, that shows movement of these particular schools.
And, and, right, and I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't know, um, Dr. Morris wanted to speak. Bye.
Through the chair, we, um, analyzed all of the schools in the state that were within the same accountability percentages as our schools. So, we used same-school, similar, um, model to compare so that we're able to predict that with the effort of using varied assessments and supports from the Q team and others, that through those efforts and data literacy, we should see an improvement that would mirror schools that perform at a higher accountability level. So, I believe some of the evidence that we'll be preparing for all of you is the efforts that we put forward for all of these schools, as Dr. Menares mentioned earlier, um, about the plate, the schools that need the most will get the most, and it doesn't mean that everybody isn't going to get what they need, but we're also going to be able to have, um, benchmarks along the way about how, when we apply an intervention, what the impact was, and how are we measuring progress across all of the indicators. As you saw, three to eight, and high school have so many different types of indicators, we did not really have a way to have one indicator that we could pull out that was common across all, because all of our schools have, as you know, completely and totally different. But, those are the types of evidence we believe will show the impact in September next year when we look at accountability levels, but you are absolutely correct, we will not know in June.
Okay. Perfect, that's fine. Um, I mean, your professional goal, I mean, year two, I'm, but I, I mean, like I said, I, I'm happy with these, um, I think we're setting a great, our, you know, a great tone for our schools and just keep up the good work, like, but, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, member Novak.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, and, uh, I, I want to echo the fact that I appreciate how much, um, we were, our reflections were listened to, um, in terms of both the, um, the evaluations and also the, um, the feedback that was given, um, during the last presentation. Uh, I, I want to say that overall, I agree entirely in terms of the realms and the focus areas, I think that, that, um, this is, this is what we need to be looking at, um, and that the, the emphasis in terms of the administration is, is, is right on in terms of that. Um, I did want to just flag, I, you know, thinking of, of what member Clancy just said, right, the, the DESI standard is that superintendents have SMARTE goals now, right? Specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, time-bound, and now inclusive and equitable. Um, and I, I, I feel like the, the language of the goals in every case is sort of, um, it, there's this real wish to kind of get us into that sort of, like, visionary strategic part at the beginning, um, and I'm struggling because I know that they have to be specific, and they kind of land there at the end, but I feel like sometimes we've got some stuff happening at the beginning that's, that's not going to be something that we can measure. Um, that, setting that aside, the impact evidence in every case isn't actually evidence of the goal. Um, and maybe I'm just looking at this sort of too, um, narrowly, or specifically, or definitively, or something, but, uh, you, the, the, the evidence of the goal is, is in every case, the actual percentage or the actual data that's cited by the goal. Um, and I, I just, I guess I feel uncomfortable with the fact that it kind of doesn't say that anywhere, that like, the evidence of the 10% narrowing is going to be the actual student and staff demographics, and the evidence of the, you know, 100% completion is going to be the completion of the emergency projects, and, I mean, not to be reflexive, but, um, the, the other things may be side effects, or they may not be, um, I will say, as someone who taught and had those 6:00 AM conversations with myself as to whether or not I was, you know, was it going to be better to go in sick or deal with the next day's outfall of having had a sub all day? Um, I'm not always entirely convinced that we want to decrease staff, staff absenteeism. Um, I understand that there's a notion that people stay out because they are disaffected, um, but sometimes people stay out because they're sick, and sometimes they should, and I'm, I'm not thrilled about that one. Um, I'm uncomfortable, I understand, I appreciate the, the acknowledgement that we're, um, we're talking about a goal that, um, we haven't actually seen the, the list for, and it's going to have financial implications in terms of the, um, the security audit. I, um, I appreciate that it's an emphasis, um, I think that's fine. And then, I, I appreciate member Clancy's flagging of the final one, because we really, we really can't, as much as I think there's general agreement that we need to be having a focus on student achievement and student performance, um, we really can't pass a goal that's going to require evidence that we're not going to have. Um, and we just got the, we just got the MCAS data and the accountability data on Tuesday, um, this is when it comes out every year, we can't evaluate the superintendent in June on data that comes out in September. So, we do have to come up with a, something else. Um, I, I mean, I was going to stand up and say that I don't, I'm not sure I actually understand what's going on here, because there isn't such a thing as a DESI accountability score, it seems like we're talking about the, the relative percentage, um, has held against other schools, which I would very vigorously argue against us doing, um, for the very simple reason that if everybody improves, you can do a really fantastic job and stay in exactly the same place. Um, and I don't think that's what anybody really wants. But, it sounds like the larger question is, what are we going to use if we're going to evaluate the superintendent in June if this isn't data that we actually get until September? So, um, I, I don't have an answer, um, but I would be, I, I would say that we need to have an answer in order to actually pass the goal. Otherwise, um, thank you, and I, again, want to stress that general focus and thrust and areas are exactly, I think, where they should be. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, member Mailman, followed by member Kamara. What's that? No, they, they all had, I, I, okay. We can go next, you know, I don't think Sue minds, huh? Member Kamara? No, go ahead.
Well, um, I just want to say thank you so much to the superintendent and her team for putting together such expansive, um, documentation with evidence as we have had, as we have, we see it right now. Um, I think, you know, um, all of the items that all the folks have mentioned, um, I just want to just, you know, quickly, um, you know, say thank you for, for that again, but then also, I want to, um, just, um, add some, add my voice to, you know, the, the item point on your goal number one, for the district goal number one, and how that impacts, um, you know, like, the student goal, um, because I, I do feel like, you know, to decrease daily, daily staff absenteeism, and I think that would really impact other things, like, for example, reading, um, and other outcomes, um, academic outcomes for students in the district. Um, one thing that also struck my, um, my curiosity, but then also struck my enthusiasm for this work that you've put together, um, is the fact that before, we, you know, didn't have guidebooks for a lot of things, and, and, um, in a huge system like WPS, I think, providing guidebooks for, you know, different level of staff members and principals, and how we go about what we are saying that we're going to do, I think those are certainly worthwhile, and not just having guidebooks, right, because, you know, but also how the intention to train staff ongoingly, um, to ensure that the items in the guidebook and all, the book, all of the, um, content area are, um, understood by staff members across the district, um, you know, from the, from the high level to staff that are working in the classroom with, with students. Um, so that's, um, really exciting to see. I also want to highlight your multi-year objective, as so, as someone who likes to see the full picture of something, and then go back to see how we achieve that year by year or month by month, I think that's certainly worthwhile. Um, so to see, you know, um, your attention to detail in those areas and to, um, back it up with your rationale with evidence from, you know, data, um, backup that we have here from articles, those are well-presented. Um, yeah, so overall, I, you know, I think to, um, you know, for folks who are listening or folks who, you know, are interested in how the district is going to move forward now and going forward, I think, you know, a review of this information and deep diving into it, um, is clearly one ways in which that, you know, folks can get that information. And, I'm certainly optimistic and, um, and, you know, on grade level three reading, um, that's a huge last, you know, that's a huge, um, indicator, because that, that supports the whole development of student as they go from, you know, fourth grade and up until they graduate from our public school, and that can also, um, support how they stay, you know, if they choose to stay or drop out. So, um, those indicators, or the fact that our attention to that, to that is, you know, it's, 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 um, we have a plan, I think, um, I'm excited to see, and I'm really also excited to see the numbers as they come through, um, to, to look at, you know, school-wide, but then also looking at, specifically looking at the schools that have been underperforming in those areas. So, I'm really excited to see your attention to detail to that matter, that we have a bigger, you know, system, but then also, we're paying attention to the schools, um, that aren't doing so well to catch them up. Um, one thing I will say, sometimes when we're trying to, you know, um, go deeper and to, you know, to address schools that, you know, are, um, at the 20% or below, you know, sometimes other things that we're doing so successfully well tends to flare up, so, um, just for us to keep our attention to other, um, you know, ways in which, to support other schools as well as, you know, paying attention to, um, the schools that really need and the students that really need those support. So, I just want to say thank you for this, this is technically what we talked about, what I've been talking about this entire time, so thank you.
Thank you. Member Mailman?
I'll be brief. Um, I just, if any students are listening, I want to comment that actually, poor profit business only works if we have good relationships too. I just want to share that.
There you go.
And then, um, number two, I appreciate the deeper dive, I think this is good, I, I might be sacrilege to say this, but is there any reason why we couldn't hold the goal until September when the scores come out? So, something to consider, you know, we just said, oh, we have to have other goals because we can't, we won't have anything in June, well, what if we just told those till December? September, again, people might jump out of their seats, but, um, I was really happy to see the staff retention rates, that's something I was, like, shocked that we didn't have. So, that was really cool. And, um, and then, that, the one that blows me away the most is by 2026, develop and identify ongoing revenue streams for a master facilities plan. Yikes. That's, that would be an incredible goal and take many partners to get on board, so I appreciate the strength of that goal. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, member Johnson?
Thank you to the chair. Um, as everyone's already, you know, talked about, uh, your, your report, and really appreciate it and, and the work that you put into it, I know there's some questionable things that I know you and your team will work on and bring that back to the table. I just wanted to just get up and just highlight something that I kind of thought about over the past couple of days after going through this and reading the handouts that you had given regarding black students who, you know, have at least one black teacher, are more likely to graduate in a Latino teachers matter. A new study reveals how important they really are. And as I was sitting down, looking at this and, and, and really thinking about it, I, I kind of went back and realized that when I was in school forty-something years ago in elementary, not forty-something years ago, in elementary, I had one black teacher in first grade, and I could tell you that throughout the rest of my school career here in Worcester, that I never had one black teacher that taught me from the rest of middle school, I, I mean, elementary, middle school, or high school. And, I then sat and thought and said, damn, thirty-something years later, my daughter is now in ninth grade, and she has not sat in front of a teacher that looks like her thirty-something years later, and we're having this conversation. And, I'm glad that this is on the forefront and that we're talking about that, because there are many, many students in the Worcester Public Schools, as we look at the number of students that, of students of color, BIPOC community, that are sitting in classrooms here in Worcester and could sit for their whole school experience here and never experienced sitting in front of someone that looks like them and that they could relate to. So, you know, I just wanted to say that and, and whatever, because I, I just find that to be fascinating to me, that, um, you know, thirty-something, forty years later, that we're, we're, we're having this conversation. But, again, thank you for the report and looking forward to the work that we do moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to thank Madam Superintendent for the report, this is probably one of the better ones I've seen, and, uh, so, I just want to say thank you, thank you to your staff, and, and if you wait until September, that means we, we can't improve the goals until September, that, they have the year's half over, so, we're in this like catch-22, but, uh, we can try to figure that out, so, um, we get several months, so, uh, good job.
Through the chair, thank you. There's, um, if I may say, I, I recognize some of what, um, is, when we, we, you know, so, um, Ashley and I work, work a lot on these back and forth, and so, what, I recognize what you're saying, you're wondering if, like, let's take, take the first district goal, um, would I be turning in evidence, for example, on the 10% narrowing of the gap in addition to turning in evidence on daily absenteeism grievances and increase in BIPOC? And the answer is yes, it's both. So, I, I can see how it, we wrote it in my head, I'm thinking, yes, I'm going to do that, and I'm going to do these other things, um, but that's not the way it's read. So, I understand that part, so I want to clarify that, um, that the, um, all of these things, evidence will be brought forward on. I also want to, I realize somewhere along the line, I'm not sure how it happened, but on the student goal, on the impact evidence, there's a really important bullet that's missing from that, and that is, um, I don't refer to them correctly here, so in California, we, we refer to when we, a student exits the English learner program, they're called reclassified students. Here, it's called, what is it? What?
Re-classified, re-flepped.
Reflep, right, is that what it is?
Fl-flap.
Reflep, okay.
Former.
Former. Okay, anyway, I'll get the language down, but, um, that's going to be another piece of impact evidence. We will increase the number of students that are flepped, um, and that'll, that'll be part in there, because, again, if I'm saying that, um, you know, going back to the accountability measurement, the importance of children's, um, English proficiency, especially before they enter our secondary schools, if they start with us in kindergarten and they're identified as language learners, um, by the time they are ready to move into the secondary schools, we should have them flepped. Um, they may choose, again, to stay in a dual-emergent program, if that's what they choose, but if we are not doing, um, what we need to in terms of tracking them and monitoring and putting in the necessary interventions, um, we are setting them up for, um, some lack of access in the secondary setting, and, um, we can't do that. And, so that'll be something that I will definitely be adding to the student goal in terms of impact evidence. Um, so I just want to put that out there.
Member Novak?
Okay, so with that in mind, then let me make the following motions, since we do actually have to vote the goals. Um, and appreciating-
And appreciating Member Melman's point, if what you're going to be doing is effectively sort of holding yourself accountable and asking us to hold you accountable for the impact evidence in every case, what if we took that, increasing the DUCI accountability piece, and pushed it off to the side and called it something else, like with, you know, a projected impact or something like that, where we, of course, will have that conversation a year from next meeting, so like, that's not going to go away, no one's going to be ignoring that, but essentially what the district is going to do is say, hey, look, we're working on the third grade reading, we're working on the student engagement, we're working on that former student, like, moving students into English proficiency, which is then going to have the impact on this other stuff. We're going to hold you accountable as the superintendent for these other pieces, with the idea that essentially, we all end up being held accountable by, when DUCI then comes out in September with the impact. Does that work? Okay. So that would be my motion, just to sort of shuffle that over essentially, and make the goal the impact evidence, and that then keeps us on the same calendar, really doesn't change anything too substantially here, and then allows us also to then say, you know, we accept the department's going to have a sort of a judgment, but we also are going to make our own judgment based on the evidence we have in June.
Member Kamara?
Thank you. So I would kind of like to kind of get a, what should you call it, like a visual of this, because I want to understand what it is that we, I'm open to pushing things as you see fit, but I want to kind of understand the importance of each of the things that we are pushing, as it relates to what it is that we have to do for, in our district in terms of reeval, with you, evaluating you, but then also seeing the outcomes fall within the district among students.
Through the chair, Member Kamara, specifically as it relates to this, I mean, well, all of the goals, but to the recommendation that is being made, or the amendment to, so what that would look like. And so I'm more than willing to bring that, we could maybe hold this, and I could bring just a one-pager that would have all the different goals clearly identified, if that is so what, but I think you guys have to vote on something first, right?
Do you suggest we hold it and come back again?
No, I think you have to vote on the recommendation, and then if that doesn't happen, then, correct.
As amended by Member Novak.
Correct.
Yep, okay. Is that fine, everybody? Member Kamara?
Thank you. So if I'm hearing correctly, we're going to vote on the goals as we heard it from you today, and then we're going to get the visual of what we're going to be pushing off until September?
No, if I understand correctly, there is a motion on the floor, correct? So you all have to vote on the motion on the floor to accept the goals as written with the amendment, and then if that doesn't pass, and either way, I can bring what this looks like, but it would be after the vote.
Right, okay.
Yes.
So can we take those votes, two different things?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you.
So the first vote is to take the superintendent's goals as amended. You have a question?
Can someone just let me know why, through the chair, why it has to be tonight?
To get them done, why not tonight?
I guess I'm unclear. So I think, I think Member Novak is saying that, yes, the measurement is going to be the scores. No. Okay, I don't know which is.
Member Novak, can you please clarify?
All right, so here is my, here is my motion, and this is, this is the only thing that I am making a motion on, okay? On the slide that says student goal, which if I had better eyesight, I could tell you what number it is, it's Agenda Page 48, okay? I am making a motion that we take the three bullets on the left-hand side, both of which start with increasing, increasing the DUCI accountability score in each of those cases, and essentially we cut them out of the goal, okay? With the idea that the administration's going to come back and talk to us about accountability scores next September, come hell or I water. And essentially then take the impact evidence, the increased grade three, the increase the percentage of students in grade seven through 12, and what the superintendent just talked about in terms of the moving students into English proficiency, and make those the student goal instead, because those are, that's data that we actually will have in June, and it's also honestly locally data. So that is my motion, so that we can actually have a, have goals for the superintendent and thus the district to move forward with this evening. Thank you.
Awesome, so we'll take that as amended, then we'll do the second vote after that? Oh, you want to speak again?
Yeah, I just want to ask the question.
Oh, sure. Member Kamara?
Thank you. So I just want to be clear that the goal of, let's see this, improvement on the goal by the end of 2023, 24, that's relating to the reading. Is that going to be what we're going to get from you prior to?
Madam Superintendent?
That's, that's what you will get. So I have a mid-cycle review in December, so you'll get an update on how all of these are progressing. And then in the evidence that I submit in June, you will see how our third graders did last year compared to this year. Is that your question?
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Anyone do a roll call? No, all good. All those in favor oppose so ordered on the goals as amended? Then we have a second motion by Member Kamara, that we have a visual presented to us, the superintendent for the next meeting, or? Okay. Those in favor? Oppose. Member Kamara?
So, to be honest, I'm not in a rush of any of this stuff.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, but, I mean, let me be clear, I'm not in a rush of the fact that we have goals, and, you know, you brought this to the table to us. It will, it will be great for us to see, you know, what is moving forward, I mean, what we are going to be seeing by the end of the school year 24, yes, 24, and then what we're moving, because I just need to see the visual. So that one, you know, I'm okay, and I trust the superintendent to be able to give that to us, whether if it's in our, what's happening, but I'm also thinking that maybe if people, all the people want to see this also, I think it's also, we should not bar other people who wants to see this information, because it's only given to us. So if there's a way for everybody else to see that information, that's what I'm going to call for.
Okay. Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, Member Kamara, if you, tell me if this will work. So previously with the goals we did last year, I started bringing them every time we would do a report of the superintendent and connect to there.
Yeah.
So I was planning on doing the same with that, so it would show all three, well, it would show four goals, because I've got four goals, and then what's the evidence? And so you'll see that every time we do a presentation. So I think, will that meet the need? And then I could also take those same goals and put them on the website for people to see as well.
Right, okay, so, but that's, that's going forward, right, as you start to do the goals, but I'm saying like now, like between now and however time it would take for us to get that one-pager.
Oh, no, I can, that'll be easy. We'll have that for the next report of the superintendent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, I'm sorry, then what I was saying also, if people want to see that, because those contents that are shared between all of us, the school committee members, are not seen by the public, so how can we make that document then public?
So I'll take that, those, that, we'll probably make it in a slide, and I'll put that on the superintendent's webpage.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Those in favor, oppose so ordered. We're in N, approval of the grants and other finance items, we can take those quickly in a roll call, if anybody has any questions, or? Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Melman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
Mayor Perry?
Yes. Okay, we did all already. Next, we have to enhance nutrition lunch options as possible to line up with the dietary and cultural needs. Member McCullough?
Thank you, and I know we have done a lot of work on this already with nutrition, but I think certainly we heard earlier from comments, the importance of making sure that it's consistent throughout the district, and that we're providing a variety of options that do meet the needs, and that I think the suggestion of utilizing people from the cultural and religious leaders, that that is something that we do along with nutrition. I actually know when I filed this item, there was a recent update of some new hiring within nutrition, and I think it will probably tag along a little bit with that position as well. So I think that we're in good shape with that, so I'm fine with that just going to F and O.
Okay, so send it to F and O. Member Kamara?
Yeah.
You all done, Member?
Yeah, I have two more items, that's what I just.
Oh, no, I think Member Kamara wants to speak.
So, thank you. I do want to, you know, thank my colleague for this item here, and, because I wonder, there was a time where, what, there was a time, last year, that was a time, where we, you know, engaged with this conversation in F and O, and with the, you know, nutritional director, Dr. Lombardi, and we talked a whole length about providing cultural foods within our district, and we made tours to the high schools. I think one of the things that still, at that time, and today's day, I think stands as a question for all of us, and why we're here again with the same item, is the matter of the fact that we're still talking about this, but then we're also talking about it in the fact that we're not still seeing these things in our district being perpetuated within our, you know, middle schools and our, what now, elementary schools. So I'm just a little bit confused, because like, we went to places and we saw and we listened, and we were told, like, these are going on, and not even these are going on, we tasted, I tasted some of the food, you know, they had different things, so like, what is the stagnation? So I would like to understand what has been the barrier between last year and this year, to the point where like, we're not able to accommodate other, you know, immigrants, not even to accommodate, because some of the immigrant's style of eating is consistent within a culture already among our students that's been here. So that's...
No, good point. Madam Superintendent?
Mr. Allen, can you come in? Because I know we've, we've talked about this. I know it's a variety of different things, but, and I do believe we can, we can find some, so go ahead.
So simply, there's been some procurement challenges on getting culturally appropriate food, but I think the larger conversation can happen in standing committee where we can give the work that we're doing, and then improvements that we can still make to the system.
Okay, good. Member Kamara, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion, if, well, that's going to go into F and O, for us to get an update on these things, because, and I don't know if I should wait for that to go to F and O, and then we do that in there, but I think I see, yes, okay, thank you. Yes, go to F and O.
Okay, Member Johnson? Okay, so we are going to send this to F and O and ask for an update on the dietary and cultural needs, okay? Those in favor, oppose so ordered. Receive an update on fund utilization for Monday Worcester Public Schools received to support African refugees. Member McCullough?
As it reads.
Those in favor, oppose so ordered. Interview the update policy regarding the process of students who have completed the program for the new citizen center and are moving to another Worcester public school.
Thank you, and on this one, I would like, I had actually, I think, was unsure at the time, but it should go to governance, because it's a policy with credits, and then if it needs to go over to TLSS, then we can move it over there as well, but I think it has to do with credits as well, too. Oh, sorry, Member Novak? Oh, sorry, just called on you like I was in my meeting.
Okay, so we're going to send that to governance. Those in favor, oppose so ordered.
I had a question, thank you. I appreciate my colleague's acknowledgement. So do we actually have a policy, a policy on the new citizen center? And I don't mean to sort of be picky about this, but my sense is what we probably have is a procedure, in which case this is going to be going to administration, and that's why I asked the question. And I'm not trying to take anybody's power away from anything, I just, I think that this is like an internal processing thing, which we don't get involved in until we actually get to high school, right? I mean, and seriously, correct me if I'm wrong about any of this.
Madam Superintendent, or?
I just, I would be fine with it going to administration, that's fine. I was, that was, I had some questions about it before, so I acknowledge that that is probably the more appropriate place for this, and administration is fine with me.
Okay, so you guys comment?
Through the chair, just, just so we are bringing back some of what you're looking for, so I believe what this is, is looking at is, some of what we heard where students are getting lost in the shuffle, would it also include the exiting of new centers, new citizen center two? So what's the process for exiting, what's the criteria, and then how do we make sure children don't get lost?
Yes, thank you, that would be helpful overall, because I think we've had some questions this year of all different grade levels as well, and then transitioning to out to other schools, and I think to the point too of not getting lost in the shuffle for some of the older students, but so overall, so administration is fine with me on this, because it is more procedure than policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess send it to administration, those in favor, oppose so ordered. Request administration point implementation of the workday system, including necessary policy and budgetary implications. Member Novak?
As it reads.
Those in favor, oppose so ordered. Request that administration report on the information technology systems implementation and needs, including as necessary, policy and budgetary implications. Member Novak?
As it reads.
Those in favor, oppose so ordered. Okay. Announcements, we can file those, those in favor, oppose so ordered. And we have a motion to adjourn. We missed one, I'm sorry. Those are for the meetings coming, I thought the same thing, I thought... No, I thought the same thing, I said, I have to listen to four of these, no. Okay, so motion is to file, those in favor, oppose so ordered.